You're the bill.
Court will come to order. It is Monday, July the 7th, two thousand twenty-five. It's eleven o'clock in the morning. This is a special meeting. And the court is now in session. And I would ask that everybody stand and Commissioner Jones is going to lead us in prayer.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, this is such a summery time we're having to come to you today. And we know that you've been with us. We've seen the evidence of that through many of the stories that we hear and the safety of the workers and safety of some of those that we feared to be deceased at this time. So Father, we love you and we appreciate all your grace and mercy that you've shown. Father, we ask that you be with these families that are just waiting and waiting and waiting and be with these workers out here and give them the support that they're going to need at this time, all of them. Put your loving hands around them. Father, show your grace and mercy where you can. And be with us and guide and direct us on the important decisions we make going forward so that we can be who you've called us to be and to serve properly and to honor and glorify you in all things that we do. And it's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Please proceed. Thank you.
I know I couldn't have done that well.
We've got some housekeeping things that we need to take care of today. We also have some status reports that we need to do. The first thing I want to address is the burn ban. The county judge has the authority to put the burn ban on and take the burn ban off. We traditionally delegate that to each precinct commissioner and have done that for some time. And it's because our county is so, so big and so different in different parts of county that we think it's better for the commissioner in that precinct to actually do the burn ban. But we've had a request to put the burn ban on. And I'm going to look to my commissioners with your permission, what I would like to do is to re- reestablish the burn ban effective five o'clock this afternoon so everybody can finish up whatever they're doing. And we're going to keep it on at least till next Monday when we reconvene. So unless there's, I'm just looking for a head nod on this.
Yes.
Well, I want to hear from the sheriff. He has some, he can tell us the whys and why nots on this and the trouble it's caused.
Yeah. Emergency Operations Center, E O C, has made this request. We feel that this will hamper. We already have enough obstacles we're going through in the search and rescue. They think this could happen in several ways. We're worried about our aircraft. We're worried about drones. We're about to cut off heat. What do we look for tonight? We're looking for heat source. Well, this county will look crazy with that. So because of just those reasons itself, you know, I'll get some more stuff when I talk, you know, my number one is your sheriff. Number one thing is to recover bodies. That's where we're here. We find them alive or dead, recover the bodies. I feel that this will hamper that operation.
I agree. Everybody's got plenty of debris. We know that. Pump the brakes and pile it up and wait a little bit.
Yep. We'll get to it. We're going to tap the brakes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Judge, do you need a motion and a vote?
No, I have the power to do it, but because of our tradition that y'all, y'all take care of your own.
Yeah.
I want, I didn't want to do anything without your consent.
All for it.
Correct.
So let's move on to the agenda. Item one point one, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to extend the declaration of local state of disaster resulting from the severe storms and flooding beginning July three, two thousand twenty-five, and authorize the county judge to sign saying.
I move for approval.
Sir.
Got a motion and a second to extend the disaster declaration that I did last Friday. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. One point two, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to extend the suspension of the requirements of the Texas Public Information Act for an additional seven days beyond July eleven, the initial period of suspension that began on July five. And this is the responses that we have to make to requests for public information. We need a little bit more time to get caught up and be able to respond to that.
Okay. I move for approval.
Got a motion?
Sir.
And a second? Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. One point three, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action following an update status of recovery efforts for the July fourth storm. And Sheriff, why don't we start with you? I know we've got several people here to make reports to us, but let's start with you.
Okay. I'm just going to give you all a quick overview of where it started to where we're at today. So obviously on the morning of July fourth, you know, we could, today's not the day and now's not the time. Just the warnings, who got them, who didn't got them. Like I said, right now I'm only worried about public safety. But we got a large amount of rain, more rain than was expected, both on the North Fork, South Fork. Gets to the Guadalupe, the water raised. My understanding, the water raised, you know, very quickly. You know, within less than a couple of hours, everybody's probably heard the, the city manager's down there running at three thirty in the morning. He leaves at four fifteen, comes back later on five something. It's before you can get back out of there, it's already, you know, that's an unknown water raise. Water raises, you know, first responders get notified, we start rescue efforts. You know, it got up really quick. We then requested additional assets and we get those, all this take a little bit of time. We're still out there searching and, and, you know, and rescuing people this time. So as the days move forward, we get our assets here. Now we got an E O C emergency command. You know, one thing I can tell the court, tell the people out here is the, I can promise you from the governor to the president that every resource and any resource we need, we get. We've already got it here. I'm trying to get a count on manpower. I think we're probably eight hundred plus. Every tool and every equipment we get, and we'll talk about volunteers in a little bit. Those guys are doing a great job out there. Okay. Really good job. You know, like I said, we are still currently under a search and rescue mission. That will change, but you know, we're just going day by day. The reason why we're under a primary search right now, primary search, you know, is, you know, it's a little quicker. And later on, when we get into a search and recover, that's where we turn every leaf over. Okay. You know what I mean? So, so with that being said, you know, we have plenty of assets. We're moving forward. You know, there is a lot of obstacles out here. There is a lot of unknown, unknown out here. I'll give an example real quick. And this goes to the volunteers. Let's just talk about that now. You know, I know everybody wants to volunteer. I know everybody wants to help. We have a list at the Red Cross. If you do, I really don't want to put this out, but if you do, the number's eight, three, zero, four, six, five, four, seven, nine, seven. Once again, eight, three, zero.
Excuse me, Sheriff, are you putting out the, the list for the Red Cross?
I'm sorry, Salvation Army.
Salvation Army.
Let me wake up. Yeah, yeah. Sorry. Corrections for the Salvation Army, eight, three, zero, four, six, five, four, seven, nine, seven. That's where you call. We're, I'm not just saying we don't want volunteers here. We very, we have a very coordinated effort. Okay. We, 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 everything's lined out. It'd be very impressive. And we'll get some pictures out from the E O C, the whole thing. I'm sure some of y'all drove by there and see if there's no Ruben even part. As, you know, I've been in this business thirty-six years. I've never seen one place with that many first responders. I mean, we, we have everything. But like a perfect examples, last night, we're in there, we got assets deployed everywhere, aircraft, drones, boats, and, you know, we get a false reports of water. You know what I mean? That's something we've been dealing with, false reports. We get water coming in on us from the west. You know, send a helicopter out there. Let's verify that. Then we got it done. Was it coming down Johnson Creek?
Yes.
The second one coming down in Johnson Creek. You know, we have assets all in those areas. Last thing one of these looked for them, we pull them out of there. You know, that takes time. Deploy them back, you know, that, that, we lost time. We lost very valuable time. But had there been volunteers, one of my business, you know, how do I get a hold of those volunteers? You know what I mean? I don't have time to be doing that and then going out and finding volunteers. We, we will need them at a point. We respect that fact, but let us do our job. Let us try to recover everything we can. So, you know, so moving forward, Judge, if you, I know we just had that briefing. If you want me to, I will read my notes from the ten o'clock briefing real quick.
This was a briefing with Senator Cruz. We've had, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. This is the briefing I just did to the media. That reminded me real quick. Let me find that. This is short. Just so the public knows and y'all know, what I'm doing is, is I am, myself and the city manager are briefing the media. There's obviously a lot of media out there. We're briefing them today. We started three times a day. We're down to two times a day. We're briefing at ten A M. and three, three P M. on this stuff. So the one I just walked away from, search and rescue operations are ongoing throughout Kerr County, using assets from local, state, and national first responders. Hundreds of trained first responders are working every aspect of this emergency. As of eight thirty this morning, we've recovered seventy-five deceased in Kerr County, including forty-eight adults and twenty-seven children. Fifteen adults and nine children are pending identification. At present, there are ten campers missing from Camp Mystic that are accounted for and one counselor. Okay. These numbers have already changed since I drove over here. They continue to rise. We continue to offer condolences to those affected. Reuniting families remains our top priority. Please note that Highway thirty-nine west of Ingram Loop remains closed to the public. Other than those who live in those closed areas, stay out of those closed areas. This allows passengers and emergency vehicles to work on this operation. One of the commissioners, I, Commissioner Holt, are going to go back over there to the E O C after this. There's a request to close some roads in, in Center Point area. We're going to go evaluate that, look about some resources over there. And when I say closed, highway closed, like basically thirty-nine is closed. We, we don't need people. What we're dealing with, people are stopping in the middle of the road. We're going to go look, go, go, go through some stuff. We don't have time for that. We don't need you unless you live out there or you work out there. We don't want you out there. Same thing in Center Point. I'm getting reports up from Commissioner Holt. We're going to go address that. We'll probably be closing some, monitoring some roads. It'll be closed, just driving through and looking. Now's not the time to do that. And then, you know, those are just made on a day by day basis moving forward. So the court knows, you know, my job or what I'm doing and what I'm dealing with, my sheriff, my priority is, is, these are my priorities, is identifying, locate and identify as many bodies that I can, you know, dead or alive. Finding those bodies, identifying those bodies, that's become an issue, and notifying the next kin. Those are the three things I care about right now. That's all I care about to be one. That, that, the field sheriff, that's my job to do. And we're doing it. We've got plenty of manpower for other, to control resources and stuff. I mean, this is ongoing. It's fluid. It's, it's still going. Like I said, from my drive over here, we've already recovered two more bodies. I'll be happy to answer any other questions y'all have.
Any questions for the sheriff?
Everything's coordinated very well.
Very, I mean, I'll tell you what, there's not one thing I want or any, I don't want anything right now, you know, just to find these bodies. I mean, we, we have unbelievable amount of resources out there, manpower. You know, I've never worked in this business, you know, retired from D P S where the federal government, I have fifty special agents here. That, this isn't something they do. But those resources via the president have been very helpful to us.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir. We have any other reports?
Kelly?
We continue to work on the roads. Most of the crossings we have worked on and do have open. They may not be totally finished, but enough of a pathway for emergency vehicles to get in or residents. We still continue to have people taking upon themselves to work in our areas. We've got some down in Precinct Three. A contractor, I think, that I just found out about prior to coming here. And something about moving a shed that I've been told the shed is on private property, so I don't think that really has anything to, to do with us, but I just really urge that the people let us do our job. Let us get in there and take care of things because we had some things done at Cade Loop that is going to cause us some problems on what the public did. And I know they think they're, they're helping us, but a lot of times it causes double the work. So it's a process. It takes time to get to locations, but we have worked through that. Two locations out towards the west end that we have not gotten to yet is Arrowhead, Camp Arrowhead. And the other one is Seago. These locations have some really large debris on it. One of them, I think I was told it has four large root balls from cypress trees. And then we have some large cypress trees. So those two, we have not done yet. Pretty much all the rest of them, we have hit. We're going back to some locations because of the rain that we got yesterday, and those locations are up off of Johnson Creek. So we've had to go back to a couple of locations. Charlie just found out that Tech Dot is here checking out structures. So they are, I guess, going to go through and check out all of our bridges, which is wonderful. Cade Loop, from what I understand, I've been told that that will probably have to be rebuilt. And so far, all the other structures so far have checked out that they're okay. Both dams have been checked by, I think it's a first response. It's through the sheriff's office. And they had some structural engineers, I think a team of five, and they went over and checked both of those bridges and they said those are dams, that they're okay.
There's a lot of false rumors about Ingram Dam.
Yeah, a lot of people were saying that the dam is gone. It's still there. It's, the water was so high that you couldn't see it.
Right.
So I want to make sure that everybody knows both those dams have been checked and right now they do not see any structural problems with them.
Kelly, do you know about the Highway four eighty bridge in Center Point? Did Tech Dot finally inspect it? Because it's still closed this morning.
I, I do not know. I know that it has been closed.
Yeah.
I tried to see if we could go in and see on their site and we couldn't see anything, but I did when I was coming out here. They were at the, that cemetery that's on Highway twenty-seven.
Yeah.
And they were going underneath that, that drainage where the bridge is at there. And so they're out here. I just don't know if they've gotten to four eighty yet. We're collecting information from vendors, you know, that would like to do work here in Kerr County. So we're taking the information. Some of them would like to donate services and materials and some of them, I mean, they're looking to get the business. And I know that that has to go through the judge for the approval. So we continue to collect that information and we'll be able to turn all of that out. I think. Yes, you can find that information at Kerr County Road and Bridge website. If you go into the county webpage and then you go into departments, you'll do that drop down menu and you'll find Road and Bridge. And we update that throughout the day.
And then I go on there and push out a Facebook as well.
Good.
And it was on Ken's Five this morning at about four o'clock. So, so they're, they're using our list. I don't remember the other TV stations, but we continue, we continue to update. So that's kind of where we're at.
Okay.
I've got a statement from Charlie. He wanted me to let him know. He texted me. He was fixing to go up in a helicopter. We've got Charlie's going to be going out. He was just fixing to get up in the air and.
Our county engineer.
Our county engineer. Because they need to take a closer deep dive. But he said his message is he wanted people to understand it's a five hundred plus year storm on the north and south forks that emptied into the river basin where it was then carried the hundred year, the rest of the way at Ingram Dam. And so that's what we were looking at. And so they're predicting, I guess, Mr. Bell, at thirty miles an hour, the water was moving until it hit Ingram Lake. And then when it hit Ingram Lake, it slowed down to about twenty-two miles an hour. And that's a lot of force with water to be doing that. But Charlie wanted me to share that on his behalf while he was in here.
Any other questions, Kelly?
Yes. My concern is debris and fire departments being able to go through debris. From your perspective, can you in your department handle all debris along the river or just?
We'll be able to probably handle some of the smaller stuff, but that really big cypress stuff and those big root balls, we do not have equipment big enough to handle that.
So we have a lot of folks that are offering capabilities somewhere in the courtroom today. Do you want to handle all that if it's on a bridge and then we handle larger debris piles off bridge separately? What is your advice?
Well, I think the off bridge stuff, for right now, we're trying to get through what we've got and get through that. And, and on the bigger stuff that we have, when we get to those, we're probably going to need to reach out and get somebody who has bigger equipment to do it. And maybe they can take up on some of the stuff that's, you know, the debris that's kind of down, down by the river in those areas. You will want a secure place that you can put that material. And there is, Charlie, I think, printed this out. It was your debris sites and it's got a lot of stipulations where that can be, especially if you're going to burn that. But you'll have to, we'll have to have areas that we can, we have somewhere to put it. I know for the gravel and stuff, we've been able to put some of that at some of our locations because some of it we may be able to use. But the bigger debris with the big cypress trees, that's, that's a real problem.
We're going to be working with T C Q to try to get some of that rectified.
And then I don't know how far all of this will go, but I do know, you know, you can start to run into all the white goods, you know, as far as washer dryer, if there are stuff from people's homes. And things always have to be kept separated on that. And, and that may be something that happens a little bit farther down the road. I think that the brush will be a main one. But then you start getting into that and, and stuff with household trash, you know, people's houses that have flooded. So.
Every type of litter there is, is out there.
Yeah.
So from our discussions with you and also Tech Dot, you want to handle the area responsibility, which is your bridges?
For right now, I want to try to get everything open that we can.
Okay.
And we're, we're getting close. I just, those last two, we'll have to really look at it. But I, Charlie said one of them had four cypress tree root balls. And so we may have to get somebody who has a bigger piece of equipment to come in and be able to remove that from, from that area.
And outside of that, we are aware, I'm not going to state the area, but we are aware of one area of a very large debris backflow
Yeah.
that we are working separately with equipment. And we'll ask the judge to sign the star request to make sure that gets up and is coordinated through our E O C. And also to have debris sites within the confines of the permit and accompanying paperwork to ensure that gets approved. And funding comes with that, that can come out of our county budget.
And I know, you know, with all of those sites, that they want somebody, somebody there as things are being dumped. Probably somebody from Kerr County to be there as, as the debris is coming in and that. So you don't have just anybody coming into those sites and dumping stuff. So.
Any other questions for Kelly?
Who else do we have here?
Is anybody else that wants to report?
We're going to ask Kent, but, yeah, we're going to ask Kent.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
And I'm going to ask you to identify yourself so we're on YouTube so the public knows who you are.
Yes, sir. My name is Kenneth Bell. I'm the section chief for infrastructure for the Texas Division of Emergency Management. I'm also the incident support task force lead here for the recovery side. So recovery operations, I'm going to give a quick brief if I could. Damage assessments are currently underway. We have about forty-seven personnel on the ground countywide. They're all spread out, so you'll see them as they're going more outside of the riverway, capturing any type of individual homes and damages that might be captured there. With that, you're going to be able to have a nice map for tactical considerations and strategies that everyone can work from into the future. It's like this area versus this area and how many homes and structures, that sort of thing. It's hugely important. Gives you a nice, good vision of exactly what you're trying to fix after a disaster like this. Shelters currently, right now, we're tracking four shelter slash reunification centers in your county right now. Those are, some of those are being consolidated as we speak. We're also trying to align what's called a family assistance center to kind of pull everything together. So there's a one stop shop, for example, for families that might be involved. Along with that are donation operations. We have ten active donation sites going right now, which we, we're, they're all overwhelmed. This is very standard, very common after a disaster this scale. We consider the term donations, the disaster within the disaster. It will overwhelm a community, even if you say no, the donations are coming, whether you ask for them or not. So we're preparing for that. We're working with officials on the board here to, or the commissioners to make this right, try to get ahead of it. You're strategically or overall in events, you're doing well, but it's, one day can put us over the edge when it comes to that, that issue. So we're working hard to get a handle on that. Volunteer reception center is open at the Salvation, or at the Salvation Army Center. Now, we're going to talk to two different levels of the volunteers. Sheriff alluded to volunteers that wanted to come and help with search and rescue. The volunteers I'm speaking to at this point are ones that are helping homeowners muck and gut homes and get stuff off the property so we can get the debris side working. So the importance of that is tracking people. If volunteers go to the F R. or to the V R. C., the Volunteer Reception Center, and they check in, the county gets credit for that for reimbursement to any federal grants that come this way. So if we have a ninety-ten split or seventy-five-ten split or whatever it might be from the public assistance grant or the individual, or the public assistance grant, that can be matched with these volunteer hours. If we don't capture them, then you're just losing. If we don't capture them, then you're just losing like services for, for value. So then it comes out of county coffe.
And so they know, Ken, you're wanting them to check in at Salvation Army?
Correct, at the Volunteer Reception Center.
Correct.
So checking in, also, we, we're trying to validate people. So when, we don't want just everybody running around the neighborhoods. They'll be banded, armbanded is the, is the objective. We have professional BOAD teams. They're called volunteer organizations in aid in disaster. These teams are set up to manage volunteers basically on our behalf. They're professional teams, they have liability insurance. And if somebody individually, one of the folks in this room wants to volunteer, go to the VRC, we will most probably be attached to a professional BOAD team. They'll train you, it's real quick on what they need. You'll be put under their insurance policies and their structure of control. So we're just going to have people running around doing all the things where there's no... When the sheriff alluded to the fact, hey, we need to evacuate location X, we can put the message out to 10 people and it's done and massive, up to the scale of a thousand to, for us. That's how we control that. Yesterday, obviously, on a Sunday weekend following an event, it's very common for just people to come from all over. Obviously, they're not checking in mainly because they don't know. So these kind of messaging points are hugely important. And I know you all have done the, the task for sure on the public information. But as things shift, that will, you'll see the conversion to more recovery, community recovery issues as we go along. Again, donations is, is going to be the Achilles heel on this thing. We definitely got to get control on that. Community feeding, we have six community feeding sites going on. Those are the canteens you see running around. You'll have operation, I don't want to get into all the groups because one group will get mad at me. A lot of BOAD volunteer teams are setting up canteens, setting up in parking lots. You've probably seen it as you go through, you pick up food products as necessary.
Do we need to be tracking that?
We are, we're tracking on your behalf here.
Okay.
And we're, today, what we're going to, what you're, we already have them out, but we have community resource flyers where you'll start seeing those distributed everywhere.
Thank you.
So we're, we're having to work in concert with the, the active response part. So we don't want to bump into our partners that are trying to do the, the search and rescue operations and as that goes on. So we have to kind of ride a, even, it's like on a seesaw when we're doing this, so we don't get into each other's way. Again, the communities, our job is to get the community piece up simultaneously, so we're trying to work through that. On the debris side, we've made connection with both city and county regarding the, the elements that need to take place on the temporary storage sites. Highly recommend that. I would take the debris conversation and I know everybody want, okay, I'm going to step back. I'm, I used to be a local emergency manager for 30-plus years. I've been through this very similar event and debris is going to be a lot. So it's wet, needs to be reevaluated by canines. You just can't move stuff quickly, so we're going to have to take a pause on some of that. But we can get ahead of it with the certification of sites, things like that. We're, we're not going to not do things. I think the best message here is to public message these things. It's not going to be tomorrow, it's going to be a minute. Everybody is going to have to, it, there will be a strategic plan. I know this group already, having met, met them all. It's, we will have a strategy plan. It'll get it pushed out, I'm sure. And these folks are going to have to be super patient on this one. This is massive.
Right. Yeah, we're not, we're not ready for contractors in here.
There is so much that needs to happen. Sheriff alluded to it. They, he, the primary search hasn't, is still underway. There's a secondary that comes in behind that. That's where they start turning over every stick and stone.
Right.
Dog rotations, thermal imaging, aircraft, I mean, you name it, it's out there. It's just a process. And it, it, it's going to take, take time. Everybody is getting flash information, you know, it's a little different. I grew up through all the generations. You're getting a lot of information very quickly. And people are looking for the next thing to go very quickly. And it's, in this deal, you have to take a pause on the, on moving things too fast. When it comes to debris, relative to debris, we've got to take a pause on some of that. A, it's wet, and that, that's a huge part of it. And the rest will make sense when the big strategy plan is formulated. And we have to just work around the ongoing operations.
Right. Excellent, thank you.
We appreciate you, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and we'll be working with our county attorney and you to figure out what forms we need when we do get to that point to, to clear. And so Kelly, you've got Crystal, I believe, is compositing a list already, and I've already got some other folks. Anybody that's trying to donate as far as equipment is concerned, they need to contact Crystal?
Yes.
Go to our website, you can get that phone number and she can put you on a list. We have to discern between whether or not you're doing something as an in-kind donation or whether or not you're doing it because you want to come here, because you want to hurry up and help with emergency, and then charge us. Because all that makes a difference. And, and both are good. There's nothing wrong with somebody making money at what they do. But we've got to have those agreements, agreements in place and then find out what we do need in regards to moving big brush and big trees.
Sure.
And we've got to locate what we're going to do with it. So there's a lot of pieces of this puzzle that are not going to happen overnight. Because we've got to get clearance through TCQ, we've got to get all the permitting. They've assured me it'd take about a half a day to get the permitting for any burn sites. But we're also, Jeff talked to them, they also found out now they won't let us burn anywhere near the river. So we're going to have to look for some alternate sites, it looks like. Or see if we can't twist their arm a little bit.
And that's what we need to do, that's where the...
I'm pretty good at doing that, so I'll see what I can do. But, but it was a, it was a real nice young lady I was talking to and I don't want to twist her arm.
You want me to?
I'll get you to do it for me, if you don't mind, Kelly.
We don't, we don't need to twist the TCQ. There are plenty of sites outside a quarter mile from the river that we have available.
But there, there is an east, there may not be west.
Okay. Do we have anything else, Mr. Bell?
Yes, sir. So there's clarity, there's going to be a lot of debris movement on private property and there are a lot of heavy equipment that's being brought in by BOAD teams. So we've got two discussions. I want to make sure everybody's clear how this all works.
Yep.
I highly recommend the clearing the roadways. Obviously, that debris is a note, that's a straight-up tactical move we have to do. So getting the roadways open, public safety, and then the rest will follow suit in an organized way. The private property movement's going to be happening very quickly. That's today, tomorrow kind of a thing, you're already seeing it.
Working on that.
Private property owners, so I want to make sure that message is clear. We're, when we're talking about debris, we're talking about public ways and river ways. So that's kind of what I've been alluding to for the last few minutes.
I just need 10 minutes of your time afterwards.
Absolutely.
Because we've, we've got people down in Center Point. We've already got equipment working and SAR, trained volunteers, so...
Yes, sir.
To get that kind of normalized, if you will, whatever paperwork, anyway.
Yes, sir.
Let's talk. Come up with a plan.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other reports?
Should we talk about the, the ministry side of what we're going to be doing through this now and get those contacts out for people that need mud outs? Or, or hold off on that? It's up to you.
Well, it's not on the agenda. Reports are.
It, it is, for, for, for what we were, what he was just talking about, for services.
Sure.
Yeah, because in 2002, we had a flood here and we created current or faith disaster response. And I was the, the manager of that. And I obviously can't do that now. So one of my board members was Pastor Phil Jackson. And I'm going to have him, I've already got, we're already compiling a list for people that need mud outs. And, and you can certainly call Salvation Army, you can call those resources. But I've got three names and phone numbers if you're in the west part. I don't have anybody in the east Kirk County yet, but west part of Kirk County. And I need somebody in the east side, and you guys can help with that. But for hunt area, Sandy Griffin at 713-824-9910. For Ingram, Kathy Simmons, 210-827-5538. Mountain Home is Carrie Short at 281-660-1708. And, and they, we've already got crews coming in and arrive this evening to get ready to start on mud out. And it's important that we get that, that done because these folks are trying to get back in their homes. That's a whole long process again, but that's the beginning of it, so we need to get that started.
Shane?
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll keep it brief. Concerning the parks, I know right now, search and rescue is priority understandably, but once we move past that...
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Speak up, please.
It's not the microphone, you just have to talk louder.
Oh, okay. Well, once, once we move past the search and rescue and we start concentrating on the debris and the parks and stuff, I just need to know where I'm going to take it. Also, some of the, after looking at it, this, some of this debris is too big for the equipment I have to move it. So I will need some help or, or equipment in, in, in the future to get this taken care of. So I guess what I'm understanding, we're not going to be able to pile it up and burn it by the, you know, burn there by the river. I do have two large areas where that could be accomplished, but if we run into those kind of problems with permitting and, and understandable, but we're going to have to get rid of it somehow or take it somewhere to get, to go, you know, get it gone at some point. Because that's kind of where I'm at. But I will need bigger equipment to make that happen.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I ask Jake to come in because his, his domain has been overwhelmed.
Do we need to hear from Doug?
Thank you for your time. I just want to give a quick update. For our small role in providing outstanding support to the command center, we remain diligent and ready to take care of any needs. Oakview Group in whole has already poured out support as well. If more assets need to come this way to assist, we are at the ready. What I really just want to make sure of is that, you know, the judge county is aware that we would recommend that interlocal contracts be made with the leading agency of this. At this time, since the command center has taken over, we have since canceled all events for the immediate future to include the gun show this weekend, various meetings, all those things, of course. But as it goes on, this means there will be a physical impact to the event center. So we would recommend that a contract be made with that leading agency. And we have examples of those, if the county would need those, from hurricanes that other buildings have had. We, we do this unfortunately more than anybody would like to do. So... And, yeah, we have canceled all the events. If there's anything you guys need at any time, you know where to find me and my staff.
Thank you. Doug, did you have anything for us?
No, sir.
No, there's, there's no public input today, I'm sorry. So with that, we're going to take a short recess and convene an executive session. So this will be the end of the, and we don't, we don't have any action, I think, to take coming out of executive session.
No.
So let's take about a five-minute recess. So, let's take about a five-minute recess.